I didn't claim anything. I asked you all to see my kids.
No, you said, Matt said, does that mean you're filing a lawsuit against our family or Christie? And you said yes. So he said then get on our property.
I have it.
And you know that's how the conversation.
I have it in recording, so I can play it from live.
I'm sure you, I have no doubt you have every recording for everything you ever seen.
That's right.
Who is that lady?
Christie Dorf related to.
I want to tell her I was.
My, uh, ex's, ex's cousin. Yeah, she was the one that when my kids went through.
Alright, well hey, Lan, what do you think about that lady?
About what?
You know that lady?
Yeah, I know her. I've known her for a while.
Christie Dorf.
Dorf?
Dorf.
Dorf, oh, that's her. I didn't know. I saw her.
She's a real.
The person we talked about.
Alright, hey, we're gonna try this live, see if it'll come up. Sorry, Terry, you ready? Alright, let's see.
He won't read it. He won't read it.
Yeah, you want, you're, come on.
Hey, everybody, we're down here at the city hall innings today. I'm gonna go talk to the city clerk. They did certi-, or she did certify the petitions that we turned in the other day where we had the 572 signatures. But they're saying that we're way short. Um, saying we're about 66 signatures short, which we don't really believe that, because we did check them back to the voter rolls. So we're down here just trying to kinda put them to the test and see what's really going on.
Alright, well, we're gonna go in. Is it coming on?
Wouldn't I see it here somewhere?
Uh, let's see. Yeah, and it's not, it's not doing, now, I'm seeing a, uh, mud in the hands. Oh, yeah, noise line. There you go. It just can't.
Oh, just delayed? Oh, yeah, there she is.
You see if you can hear it okay. Alright, let's roll.
Sure, there was just that little bit though then. It wasn't what she said.
Well, it'll be, it'll be on.
It will. It'll come across. It takes a little while to load up.
Oh, they're, they're talking.
You wanna grab the door, Chris?
What y'all do to run all your dog catchers off?
Uh?
They mean to.
No, no, we just found jobs elsewhere. We've got a couple hired now.
Well, good.
Y'all full down there, aren't you?
Uh, now, you know.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you.
I have two part times and two full times.
Well, no, I mean with the, the dogs and the cats.
As far as the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it stays full.
Yeah, I know people, you can't feed their dogs now, whatever.
Oh, very possible.
Buying that dog food, paying the water bill.
The water bill.
Hey, Sharon, good morning. I wanted to see if we could talk to you a little bit about the, about the petitions and the signatures and everything. I understand that, yeah. I got your letter. I got your letter and we read through it and everything. And what I wanted to see is, I wanted to see the list that you were using, how many were on that? Because I saw in the paper where, um, Glenn Evans had reported that, uh, you guys were using 2067 for your, the actual amount of voter, amount of registered voters in, in Ward One. And that includes the suspense voters, I believe. And those are, those aren't counted. It says in the election code that they, they're not included. And we already converted that with Laura, so, I mean, well, actually, before we came down to part that turned in that day, we had a meeting with her, you know, was asking about suspense, because I was concerned about that. Because it's almost 200 of those, and then there's all those, uh, cancels, the C-19, 16, and there's like a C-760 and all that. Those come off of that petition before. Their 25% figure is, is taken.
Actually, it'll all be presented Tuesday night.
Well, we're not gonna wait.
No, we can't wait that long, Sharon. We have a right to, uh.
We have to have redress.
Yeah, we have to have redress. We have to have.
We took all those back.
We have to have the ability to fix. Uh, ma'am, I don't think that's sufficient.
We're trying to handle it locally, Sharon. We're gonna go to the secretary of state if we all get something here.
No, no, and who, no, that's not true. Who is responsible? Because in the charter, it says that you don't count suspents.
No, not in the charter. It's in the Texas election code.
Or in the election code.
I'm not here to argue with you.
We're not trying to argue. We're just trying to get the facts.
So you're, are, well, let's get this.
We're saying we're gonna use those suspense voters in there. Because that's what, that's what's, that's what comes out. When I look at the file that she gave me, it has 20, 20, 2067 records. What'd she say before she went out? I didn't hear it.
Oh.
I think you want to know, just shut the door.
So she says she's basing it on the charter.
Well, the Texas election code takes precedence over that.
I know. But even on the charter, we're not involved on that.
It doesn't say anything about suspense voters or anything else, you know? But the Texas election code does.
Well, yeah, but this is, this falls right in line with everything we've been dealing with, which is, uh.
First off the bat, they tried to cut us down by 40, 30 or 40 signatures. Uh, we handed in 270, what, 272? No, 572, 572. And, uh, she added them all up and got 540, I think.
So is Sharon the one who makes the call, or is it someone else?
It is under her purview, but I know she's got a supervisor, and, you know, it's like everybody else does. We all got somebody we answer to.
Well, yeah, so we need to find out who her supervisor is. And then we need to know what.
She's appointed, uh, according to the city manager. He like brings up who he wants. Now, what's that about?
I don't know. It's Lieutenant Thomas.
I didn't say anything to her that was threatening or anything.
No, you didn't.
I'm not here to argue with her either. I just wanted to.
Pretty cool. Darn cool, considering how much work you put.
No, that's perfect. And he's being, he, he's just giving us some information here. Okay. Thanks. So, so basically, she, she, it appears that she is, she answers the council, and that's it. But, but there has to be.
She's appointed by the city manager.
Wait a second, because it was the city clerk that wrote the complaint against me.
Well, I think that we need to file some kind of complaint against her for not doing them immediately, just like it says in the charter. She needs to review them at once, you know? We were hanging around, waiting till last night to hear about that. And the five days would've been Saturday.
But there has to be a way to, for us to verify what, what is deficient.
And to go over the signatures with her.
How many times did she run the calculator the first time?
I don't know. Too many times.
Several mistakes.
It's easy to make a mistake. I know they happen. I make them all the time, you know? But, uh, that's why somebody needs to look, take a look at it.
Alright, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back here real quick and see if, uh.
Dean too?
Yeah, see if he's.
Let me see what they say, buddy.
I think we should go in there with Eric, because she was so nice the last time.
Sharon Lee?
It's only she went in there and shut the door.
Should've went and argued with him.
I'm not arguing with you in there. I just wanna see what's done. We have that right. I mean, I feel bad for the girl.
Yeah, so basically, that's what we have going on. It's just a, a way to, uh, put up roadblocks for the people who have made a very clear decision that they don't want, uh, Gerald Tomlin serving on the council.
We don't want any of the councils.
None of the council needs to be up there. They're not.
He's just the first in line.
And, uh, this isn't just Mineral Wells. This is going on across the state. Um, pretty much every community is dealing with the exact same thing. But where Mineral Wells is a little different is they're trying to saddle us with $300 million in debt on.
A bond that they don't even have yet.
On a bond, yeah, well, that's, that's the goal. But on how many people, but how many people live here? We've got 15.
14,800 or something like that.
So, less than 15,000 people.
We have less than we, 12% less than we did in the year 2000. I know that. That's all, as far as the numbers.
You're telling me less than.
The year 2000. We have 12.1% less.
When, when the entire state of Texas is absolutely busting at the seams. Every single community in Texas is busting at the seams, except the city of Mineral Wells. That supposedly, we have 4,000 to 4,500 permits, water permits, um, that are waiting, you know, are waiting to get approved for a permit to be able to get a water tap.
And I believe that probably at least half of those are coming from Parker County SUD, um, as far as the surface water over there. And they are going to be, their, their plans they started making in 2018 were to be totally self-sufficient on their water supply, because they've dealt with the city of Mineral Wells for decades.
Which, which brings me up to my next point. So even if we're taking in those 4,500 permit, uh.
We won't be taking in Parker County.
But, but here, but, but I'm trying to make a point here that, that you have 4,500 people waiting to get permits, whether it's in Mineral Wells, Palopinto County, or Parker County, that has to do with the water coming out of Turkey Peak. But, they, they do not, um, now, let's see what she says.
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Now, what they don't want, uh, I lost my train of thought there for a minute, but.
That was the 4,500 water taps.
So out of those 4,500 water taps, we don't have the water to. How you doing, Chief?
Hey, how's it going, Chief?
Hey.
All my, all my rowdy friends with.
Bring it over here, Lan, so you get a good close-up.
Well, no, so, we've been shunned by the, the city clerk. Okay, we wanna be able to have a right to go over these signatures of how we fell short when.
We checked them all back when we got here.
Why, why Tuesday?
By Tuesday.
Tuesday, next city council meeting in the charter.
No, I don't think that's right.
And five business days on your other email.
It's not business days in the charter.
Are you in line for the.
No, you're.
And I was told that the generally accepted principle is, if it doesn't say.
Five business days in the state law where the charter is silent on notifying you. Be back. 277-0023.
Yeah, it's the same one that says that they can't include suspense voters in.
Just need to leave this for the alert, see if you can find stuff for me.
Yeah, and the water.
Okay, plus another, plus another hundred.
Well, you're the city of Mineral Wells. You're the city of Mineral Wells.
And I'm just saying, you're all responsible for it. You're, you're.
City council. City councils. City council points.
I believe the charter says that you're welcome.
City council points, city manager, the city clerk, city judge.
After you've given me recommendations, right?
I don't make a recommendation on the.
Yeah, I figured I'd take it there too.
So, okay, so let's go with that. It falls under city, uh, city council. But, but the.
Thing is, is, we don't need to wait that long. I mean, that's crazy.
What, what doesn't make sense about this? And I, I, alright, I'm just venting to you because you're a city man.
I listen, I listen. I mean, I appreciate your position and I appreciate what you're saying. I'm telling you what.
But, but what doesn't make sense?
We checked one of the signatures back to the voter roll before we came down here.
I'm sorry?
Two of us sent, checked all those back to the voter roll. I can read every signature on that petition. Okay, because I was there for a lot of them. I went through them every night when walkers came back in and looked at it and everything and made sure they were readable and they were legible. And now they're saying that they, you know, cut off some signatures because they were illegible. Well, there is no, there is no clause in the, in the election code. I know there's not. It doesn't say, you know, it says any signature is acceptable. Because your signature is your signature, whether it's made in reading or not.
What is the procedure to contest what's going on? Because I realize you don't have any say.
I don't know.
Well, I, I, now, now, wait a minute. Here's the issue. And it can go to her or whoever. But there has to be a procedure that we can read and say, okay, this is what it is. And if you're pointing me to that code, let me give out to her.
If they try to.
After they present this to the city council Tuesday night, that would be a great question. I, I don't, I don't truly know. And I'm not playing games with you. I don't know what, what the redress is.
This lady right back here has to know. She, if we have a problem, somebody's gonna say, well, I'm doing what I'm told. We're okay with that. There, we have no control over that. Y'all have your rules that you have to go by. What we need is, uh, to, to be able to say, hey, here are the rules.
She needs to be able to show me why she made her decisions on the petition.
Yeah, this is unacceptable.
Actually, she gave me a letter, but it doesn't say what signatures of what.
And they added suspended voters.
Yes, they have. They're accounting the all suspended voters in the Texas.
They changed the number.
They're not included. So that 25% that she's holding us to, Dean, that is based on 20, 2067 voters. And that's not what, that's, that's not correct.
1,800.
It should be around 1,828, 1,826, somewhere in that area.
Bad.
1,800 without those suspents and all those Cs, like C-16, C-17, there's a status column there. And all those, they come off over every start.
I'll ask the city attorney about the redress. I will. I haven't.
No, I mean, this is.
I've stayed out of this.
I mean, it's very important to us.
I have stayed out of this because I told you the first time.
I, I understand your position on.
The city manager is not mentioned in there anywhere. True or false?
I, I believe that it's false.
In the, in the section of the initiatives, petitions, or refer.
No, not petitions, but it's talking about the city clerk. And now, upon your recommendation, the city council approves it.
I didn't.
Now, whether you did it or not, I'm just saying it does say that in, in there as far as the procedure. Y'all don't wanna be so big off procedure. You know, so I would think that y'all would follow the procedure.
I, I, okay.
Yeah, we're hanging out here.
And.
Look. Yes, ma'am.
What did Laura Watkins' office say to you?
Oh, yes, she told us when we met before we came, turn the petitions in, because we had concerns about this. The suspense voters in particular. Every one of us, I think, asked a question about it when we met her for an hour and a half of you before we came down here and turned the petitions in. And she told us that day that suspense voters do not count. We asked her very specifically.
And then even within the state election code, it says you don't count suspended.
You can't include suspense.
Okay.
And this is intended.
They did count them.
I thought the file, my file has 20, 2067.
And look, he, but, but let's quit beating up on.
I'm not trying to beat up on him. I just want him to understand.
There's nothing he can do. The, it, here's what I'd like to know. If we have questions, where are we gonna send these questions? Because we have a right to.
Go over it.
To, to know, like.
Have she sent them out? Why?
No, who are we gonna communicate with? If it's not you, no problem.
Is there, is there a challenge? I got you. Is there a challenge? Is it like Tuesday night at council? Is that where?
Oh, well, yeah, because the problem.
Question of challenge could be.
I'm not really getting these things.
Well, well, here's the thing. We mean, every.
We're not treated equally in the city council meeting.
Yeah, what's gonna be done there?
It just says present it to them. I don't know.
You state your grievance, and then they, will they give you, all I've ever seen in a city council meeting is people state their grievances there, and no one says anything.
On an agenda item?
Well, I've never heard anything worked out. I mean, have you all? I mean.
Well, it's, it's all, it's all worked out pre.
In the.
Yeah, but, but the other thing is, and, and, okay, so I have my letter, and I'm assuming I need to send it to her. It has to do with the, uh, the open meetings where I, where we can come up and speak and then we can.
Oh, on any topic?
Yeah, on any topic and whatever. And I get it, but I have to notify someone. I have to send a, a notice that says, hey, you're screwing up. Here's where it's at. That has to go to somebody. I can't just send it to Beth House. I don't even know where she lives.
I have a question.
Go to the city attorney if you were, like, if you're gonna cha-, challenge the governmental body on its procedures or whatever. So your attorney general or city attorney would be the one that would weigh in on legalities.
Well, I understand they're gonna weigh in, but I have, here, here's the thing.
They don't have any.
We didn't let that city attorney.
They do not have the judicial authority over petitions. Your city attorney does not.
I'll bet you say they were. You asked me for an answer on redress. I will ask her.
Hey, were you the one that put that recall on the agenda last, last city council meeting?
An executive session? All that comes out of our city attorney's office vetted to legal conformity. But do make the agenda.
Alright. The question I have.
Yeah, we could have, yeah, that's a question.
I have to address someone in government, and then they can take it to the attorneys. That, I, I mean, I know that. Like, if I have a personal grievance, I have to notify that person. Well, with the, who receives notice on behalf of the council? That's really what it comes down to.
He's saying.
Me, I guess, or the city clerk, or the city attorney.
Well, she, I bet you she will.
The city clerk is abandoning their post in here.
She said, I'm not here to argue with you. And I said, I'm not here to argue either. I just wanna see how it's done. I, I, that's a fair question.
Well, and the real truth is, the city, the, the people in Ward One are very upset. How many people voted to bring?
137.
137 people voted to get Tomlin in. 500 and.
72.
People said out. And so their voice is being taken from them because of this bullshit that happens in this city every stinking time. And so that's why you're, it's, this isn't going away.
But the thing is, we have to know.
Yeah, well, I, you can't play both sides, though, because.
I'm not playing either side.
We should go ahead and make that call and find out what we need to do.
I'm not playing either side. They're asking me a question that I don't have any authority over on the recall. That is a state.
Were you gonna call them?
Guaranteed. Do you want me to call them?
Please.
Oh, are you done?
I am.
Sure.
Fran's probably got one more question I want to get to, though.
Let's do something.
So redress, and then what else?
I wanna know, yeah.
And examination of the findings pre the city council meeting.
I would love to sit down with Sharon and just let her show me, say, you know, just, so I can argue with her. I just want it to be plain as day, so I can go. Talk to the people in Ward One and say, this is what happened.
If there, if there's a mistake made, it, this is just a general.
Still, that's a redress question per state.
No, but if there, yes, you're right. Okay. But we need to know that redress procedure, because the way it.
I got people to answer to in Ward One.
Well, well, basically, you have, you're supposed to have a, a, a period of five days, 10 days, some specified amount of time to fix a mistake, which if we didn't have enough signatures.
Amendment, you talking about?
Well, unusually.
No, they're not.
Well, it's just like if I'm late on my water bill, I get a 30-day period or something to not pay to fix it before the audience come out and turn it off. It's the same thing on any given thing. So if there's a, if there's a discrepancy, we have a right to fix that discrepancy, know exactly what it was, not just, well, you fell short. Okay, well, how did we fall short? Number one, we know that y'all overcounted when I say y'all.
Oh, I'm cool.
Okay.
And they even mentioned on their letter that they took seven of my signatures off and considered them invalidated because they were suspense, they were on the suspense list. Like, okay, well, you can't take them off this way and not take them off the other way. I mean, there are suspense voters. That's who they are. They're pulled out of there anywhere, you know?
Well, I mean, that's what, take them off this way or take them on the other way.
Well, yeah, because, because they say that they were.
So they should've been counted?
They're saying they wanna count, they're, they're saying they're counting them for their part of it. But for my part of it, they're not counting them.
It's a double dip.
You don't see that?
It's a double dip. Here's what happens.
So you get penalized because they're, from the city's, your, your position is, your city's perspective.
They can't do it both ways. They can't say, I'm gonna include them on this petition when it's against the election code, for one thing, alright? And then come over here, and if they're not gonna, if they're not gonna, if they're gonna include them, then they need to let them sign too. You know what I'm saying? They didn't let them do that. If they're not allowed to be on the petition at all, that's the only reason they would take them off and say these seven are disqualified because they're suspense.
So they shouldn't have signed it?
Well, they shouldn't have signed it, but it doesn't matter. They just take them off. I'm just saying, it has to be the same standard for both. It has to be the same standard for both. If they're counting them in the petition.
So.
No, go ahead. Go ahead. I'm sorry to be here.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Did the city attorney approve the letter that was sent by Sharon to Ms. Gladwell? I'm assuming the city attorney had to, given his blessing.
The letter or the certification?
The certification was the letter.
Yeah, the letter itself.
The cover letter.
Obviously, what Sharon wrote to Ms. Gladwell, and then the letter, obviously, it's got y'all's letterhead from the city. So I'm assuming the city attorney.
It's my understanding there was a review, yes.
Well, you know they don't do anything with that.
And if the city's attorneys have reviewed this, and they're saying it's in compliance with state law.
How can they do that? It's not.
Well, that's our grievance, because it's.
It's not.
It's not in compliance with state law. And it wouldn't be the first time the city attorneys do that. Many times.
Well, and, and we just have to have a way, look, this is not actually a formal way to get this handled. The formal way is for us to know who to, who to, uh, communicate with. And, I mean, we've been down this, this road with other things to where we know that if, if proper notice is not given to all the parties, and then there's a lawsuit filed by someone, that's the very first thing, because notice is the very first step to due process. A, a government body deserves due process, just like we deserve due process.
So redress, review, and who's the proper notice? Anything else?
That's it. Let's stick with that. And I will email you next time, but this was, uh.
Oh, you don't have to email me. I can.
I got a lot of upset people. We wanted to get it straightened out as quick as possible.
If it says, or your attorney says that it goes back to the attorney general, the AG's office, and y'all are supposed to comply with them.
Secretary of State.
Secretary of State. Well, if it comes, I know the, in regards to the AG, because this city has spent thousands suing me when I was trying to request information on the Baker, and the AG actually agreed with me when I was the mayor.
And the city AG.
Y'all were supposed to release them, but the city attorneys and city managers were like, pretty much gave a big middle finger to the AG and said, ah, it's just their opinion. It doesn't matter. Even though it was written that I had full access to see the information with regards to Baker, I don't wanna see the same thing happen. If, if the only place it can go to is the AG, are y'all gonna disregard their guidance? That's, that would be a question I'd wanna ask the attorney.
I were making phone calls. Give me a little bit of your.
My back is. Thank you, Dave. Thanks, Joe.
Alright. Y'all doing alright?
Doing alright, thank you.
So now, we wait now?
So, so what we're dealing with here. Uh, and I, and I.
Come on.
You wanna go in there?
Yeah.
Alright, let's go in here.
Yeah, they got people here coming in.
Sorry, that's empty. Not much trashy shit, girl. Well, you're right. It is cold.
Much better. I knew, yeah, I knew it.
But that, that's my point.
I think people.
Are we waiting for him to come back?
Yeah, he said he's gonna come back. We, we just take it as opportunity to, uh.
Head it straight.
Oh, is it? Didn't?
I did head it. It was good. You're good, I tell you.
So, I mean, we're gonna sit here and wait. I might as well talk. Everybody likes that. Everybody knows I like to talk, almost as much as Terry.
Yeah. And I can get a word in.
Oh, well, Terry, you can break it down, and I'll step aside, if you wanna do that. I just, I think it's important to, for people to realize that this is the process. The process itself is meant to wear you down and, and drive you away.
And give, and give up.
It's been, everything that we have done has been a trial. It's like, everything has to have a fight to do what's right with this city.
Yep.
Everything on this petition process from the day one, when I came down here to say in the affidavit, and they had me leaving and coming back seven different times, you know, running all over town, running and fetching, when she saw something new I needed, you know?
So Dean's solution was for us to come in on Tuesday night?
On Tuesday, yeah.
And have three minutes to talk, and the, and the council can't respond back? That's.
That's great, isn't it?
You know what I'm afraid of? That there is a limitation of when we can fix it, and they're running out the clock.
There's not. The way the charter reads, it's only available on the other kind of petitions, not on recall.
Well, they've already.
Because recall's a whole different animal.
So we can't amend?
No.
And that, that's what it says in the state code?
I don't know about state code. I don't believe that's right, though, because Marcy would've told me. We talked about it this morning at length.
There has to be.
She did tell me that we.
I, I have not.
She said that we might have.
Here's the guy, right, here's the guy who asked that question too.
Be prepared to call the secretary of state's office, what she said.
Hey, how's it going?
Oh, man, it's getting here.
Having fun? Oh, come on.
But she did say that we would have to take it to the secretary of state's office most likely.
Well, and that's okay. I mean, we're, we're willing to go through the process.
Locally as long as we can, you know?
Right.
Do it the right way.
It's not really, uh, it's not really anything new.
I don't guess I've ever really ever had a recall petition get to this point before, really, because, you know, in Chris's, they didn't hardly get anybody to sign it when they tried to take him out of office for that.
Yeah, well, they get less than a hundred state, citywide.
Citywide, yeah.
But, but you've gotta have.
It had all the past mayors up there pushing it, you know? It ever functioned.
But you've gotta have an opportunity to fix something. If there's a mistake, you need a way to fix it.
Well, Laura Watkins' office is saying you can't put in suspense voters, right?
Well, she said it and the state election code says it.
Yes.
We're right on that. I have no doubt, you know? And my file, the file that I got from Laura has two, two thousand sixty-seven entries in it. It's the exact same number that they're using, but I took all of the suspense off because I knew we couldn't use them.
The, the letter you put, that Chris pulled up on his phone, it looks like a two-page letter.
No, it's like a three.
Or a three-page letter, four-page, I haven't seen it. Does it, it doesn't spell out every single deficiency?
Well, it does, but it says things like six signatures were done for this reason. Well, I, I didn't know which six, 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 again, so six signatures they're talking about.
Yeah, we, we need an opportunity to fix it.
I wanna go, I wanna sit line by line and say, you know, what's wrong with it, you know, if this is one you took down, what's wrong with it, because I can read it.
You've worked hard at this. You should.
And I pulled them all up again by birth date, when I couldn't find them another name, because we had a bunch of realists that said and checked it back to each other, you know, called it off and I checked it out. And we had about, uh, we had quite a few of them, but I went back through yesterday and pulled them not only by their name, I pulled them by their birth date. I didn't even search for anything else. I just took the file and defined on Excel and bunched in their birth date, and I found a whole, I found sixteen more, you know, that should be counted for us.
Yeah, so this is the, I'll read to you. It says, and this is like in paragraph first page, section one thirteen of the Mineral Wells City Charter requires that completed petitions be submitted to the city clerk within thirty days of filing of the affidavit and that the petitions must be signed by twenty-five percent, here's the million dollar word, qualified voters of the ward in question. So the city attorney, obviously he approved this letter, is saying that, hey, it's supposed to be twenty-five percent of the qualified voters. But the city is not using that. They're using all the registered voters, which we found.
Suspends and everything, right. Didn't want them to be canceled.
Suspended, canceled. I know y'all found several folks that have passed away.
Dead, yeah.
Yeah, we found, we, we found dead people. We found people who are not registered with the state, but they're supposedly valid voters here in, in Palo Pinto County.
I gave a single one of these route sheets. This is what the folks used to walk this, walk the neighborhoods. I took this from the registered voters list and printed it off so they would have one street, first sheet. Well, some of them had four or five sheets, but anyway, you know, they'd have one, one document that had all of the people that they needed to see on that street. And I'm telling you, these things are terrible. We've got, on this one, there's probably only, what, fifteen names on here, and seven of those people are not even at their house anymore. We have vacant, we have abandoned homes, you know, it's still, yeah, they've moved all over the place. There's seven out of, out of fifteen.
For years. For years they've been gone.
Yeah, and, oh, yeah.
Not like if they just moved.
One of them said that the guy had been dead for four years.
Yeah, I, I boiled it down. I mean, I was.
Nine on here. I mean, it's just like every, eight on here, every single one of them. You know, I went through them all this morning myself again, just to, you know, for, for familiarizing myself with how bad they were, you know?
We need to clean up the voter rolls.
Oh, they, they need to be cleaned up.
They definitely need to.
Big time.
Well, and, and I think that's what's gonna have to happen first, before we get going again on the next recall, is to first, you have to get down to a qualified voter list.
Well, that list they, they gave me has the same number they're using. They just didn't put, take the right things off of it. They just don't know what they're doing, you know? They wanna stick us.
I, I don't, I don't think that's a, I don't, I don't think that's an accurate statement. I think they know exactly what they're doing.
Well, that, that could be true too. I'd like to give them the benefit of the doubt. People do make mistakes, but. They can happen a little bit too often around here.
Well, I, I mean, honestly, you boil this down, it's thirty days. I've seen other states that allow ninety days and you only gotta get ten percent.
We had ninety percent of these done in the first two weeks.
Yeah, in two, if the city had said, we're gonna go by registered voters and you still gotta do twenty-five percent, we would have done even more. Honestly, we were completed with this in, like I said, two, two and a half weeks.
It was fourteen days. We had, we had ninety percent of it done.
We already.
Well, and if they say you're short, how many, we'll, we'll run out and get some more.
I know. The way I figure it, the way they, if once they take the suspense voters out, I think we're six shy, using their, their, their theories.
Well, they have a hundred and eighteen that they're not even counting, so I mean.
Yeah, a hundred and eighteen.
Once they go through and show us why, and I, I'm, I like your idea of sitting down and saying, show us why these people are not.
I've got my copy of the petitions right here. I've looked at them all morning.
I mean, think about all those voters, they can't even vote if they were gonna go and vote.
She's got every right in the world. Every right. She's right. State says it, even, does the city charter say it too?
Well, the, the letter that the attorney sent states it in the letter that it's supposed to be the qualified voters, and yet.
Every right is on your side. The law is on your side.
It does say qualified, but they're not qualified voters if they're in suspense. They're not, because they don't know where they live. They, they've had some piece of mail come back or something's happened where it made them believe that that person doesn't reside where they say they're, you know, where the records say they reside, so they put them in suspense until they can get a hold of them and verify where they actually live.
But, but Terry.
She should be sitting right down with you and showing you.
And that's all I wanted. She said, she didn't wanna argue. That's all I want. I said, all I want is a chance to sit down with you and just look at them, you know, just look at them.
But, but Terry, the, the smoking gun is the seven suspended people that they took out.
That's what I was trying to explain to the chief.
Yeah, he didn't get it, though.
Or to the city manager.
Well, no, it, it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit to wrap your mind around. You don't realize all these little nuances.
Well, when I first said it to you, you were like, what? Because I was like, they can't have it one way, you know, one way and not the other way, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, they can't. They can't. They're gonna hold you to this standard. They can't use it.
Well, and to hold us to that standard is ridiculous anyway with this role.
Well, suspended should not be in there, period.
Neither should all the council cancels.
And we had so many abandoned homes moved that weren't suspended.
And we had, we had whole new people, we had whole new people that had moved in there and been there like a year, they said.
Years. You're still on the list of being legal.
Yeah.
But the, but if we, with the meeting that we sat in with Laura, though.
Inflated.
But, but Joey, the thing that we, when we were over there with Laura. Yeah, we're, we're still.
She actually said that the suspense.
Why don't you come over here?
No, I'm.
And then you can sit with Terry.
Now, y'all ran to the other side over here looking for the camera, like, great, I'm all sweaty and chatty here.
No, people like.
I didn't hide behind the table, though.
Yeah, what we're waiting on is for, for Dean Sullivan to come back.
Come out and tell us the process.
And, and explain the process, because what you just saw with the city, Shannon, what is her last name?
Sharon McFadden.
Sharon McFadden. This is the kinda Nazi crap that we've been dealing with, with the previous gal who was, uh, well, she was a felon, wasn't she?
She has, she had quite a few charges. I didn't rather.
Yeah, like.
The city councilwoman?
No, the, the previous clerk.
Oh, look, I'll get started talking about her.
That one who never smiled, you know?
Yeah. What, what we have really here.
She's mad to be here every day, you know?
Is a criminal syndicate. It's been operating in the city of Mineral Wells for decades. Now, I'll say, uh, you know, Dean Sullivan has always had a, a open door policy. I think he's gonna, he had, but he has a job to do, and he serves at the pleasure of the council.
I don't really appreciate him saying it's not a city ma, city manager thing, because everything is a city manager thing with the city of Mineral Wells.
Buck stop.
Isn't it? I mean, really? When you think about it?
So he's saying, I don't.
He advises the council on me. He does everything fit, at their will, and he's the one they go to when they need answers, so.
The truth is, though, the people voted this guy out. The voice was heard, and now their voice is being thised again, again. And that's why they said there's no hope. The people told me there's no hope.
But that's why.
You're not going away. You're annoying. You're annoying. We're not going away.
But that's the thing, the last, for the last fifty years of what this has been going on.
I couldn't even get the petitions until I sit down and I'm gonna leave until I get the petitions. You know, I said, I've been here jacking around with you people for two and a half hours. I'm not gonna leave until I get those petitions. You can put them contingent up on Tuesday or whatever, but they just, they just approved the affidavit for some other guy yesterday, the exact same affidavit. All I did was put my name in his place. So I'm really not concerned about what the city attorney's gonna do over the weekend. You know, give me those petitions and I'll get out of here. And they did.
Yeah.
You know, said, well, might change on Monday, but.
It's not right what they're doing to people all the time.
Well, the, the thing is, when you, when you start boiling this down, if you have to answer to an attorney for every single thing,
They don't do anything with that.
you have to think about who's really running the city. It's not this council, it's not Dean Sullivan, and it's not that gal in the back, Sharon.
No, it's not.
It is these, these city attorneys. It's a Texas municipal meeting.
They're taking fear of the corporation.
And they, they are. That, that is what it boils down to.
Chris will tell you about that.
Yeah, I mean, you end up, once you, once you start realizing, and, and people were talking about it on the national level too.
Yeah.
Uh, council, you know, the, 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 uh, Congress and all that is just run by big business. You know, and, and people that they can, can think it's conspiracy all they want to, but when you start drilling down and you start, try to start getting answers,
Personal relations with them.
you have to go back and talk to the attorneys who are driving the whole thing.
Yeah, the first thing they did, first thing they did with my affidavit was send it to the city attorney. I'm like, whoa, whoa, they don't have judicial authority on that petition.
Yeah, no, that, that's the thing, and, and I, Dean, he's always been good. He'll talk to me, and that's something you have to appreciate, because that prick that was here before from up in Kenyon.
Oh, Randy Criswell, man.
Criswell, he, he didn't have open door policy.
And when you did get in there, you didn't wanna be in there.
But the thing that you, well, I.
He's mean.
Yeah, he, but, but, but they put it into perspective, Mineral Wells is so corrupt, he'd rather go deal with, what, arsenic water?
Oh, come on, you took, you took my line.
Yeah, no, I love it, and I'll, I'll credit.
You're willing to so bad, so bad.
Yeah, I didn't even, I'm, I'm glad you brought it up, because I didn't know who to credit on that.
That was me.
But Terry, Terry brought it up. The, the city of Mineral Wells is so corrupt and so dirty, they would rather deal, he would have rather gotten.
He left town because he'd rather deal with arsenic in the water than what he found here in Mineral Wells. Yeah, that's true. That's a true story right there.
I just feel really bad for the citizens that are under this huge financial burden. They were finally feeling hopeful. We, we knew we had it, and then they changed the rules and add the.
And, and that, and that's.
And we expected that one to happen.
And that's gonna happen every single time they move the goalposts.
So how many did, should we have gone over?
It doesn't matter.
Whenever y'all were saying, I think we've got enough, I'm like, oh, no, I want at least a hundred over.
Yeah, we did. A hundred and fifteen.
Yeah.
We won a hundred and fifteen over.
It doesn't stop the mangle, though. We still have, this is.
It was, it was a shot across the bow, you know?
Well, but it, but it puts, it, it puts a, some, a reality check on people who have not dealt with the corruption here in this town.
Yeah, they're sort of going about their days, you know, starting to get by every day.
Now, now, and I wanna put it in perspective too. The last time we did this, we got, uh, uh, the city manager's no longer here.
Steve Butcher.
The, the Steve Butcher, who ran the industrial foundation.
There's roughly twenty organizations, either people or organizations, that are no longer involved because of what we did in twenty seventeen, so starting in twenty seventeen.
And they've, basically, they've done a restructure and they run, you know, they wanna say, well, we got new people up here. Not really.
Names changed.
Name changed, the same game still being run. You know, and I was out at Possum Kingdom Lake, uh, last weekend, and water level's completely full, or pretty close. It may be down a few foot or two.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
But it is looking really good.
Good management.
But, well, no, it doesn't have anything to do with it.
There, there is.
What, what it has to do with.
Oh, oh, he's getting the city clerk.
Oh, man, let's see what's there.
The thing is, she's probably gonna be sitting down here beside me.
Oh, I was gonna get it.
Oh, you're gonna. All right, here we go.
Nope, here we go.
Come on in for the course up, Lynn. All right. See, that's what I love about Dean, is.
Nothing.
Mr. Sullivan, not Marcy.
Nothing, not a damn thing.
I don't like it.
All right, um, city legal advice as far as redress, that's a question you'd have to ask of your own legal advice counsel.
No, that's bullshit. No, that's.
That is bullshit.
There has to be a policy. There has to be.
Policy?
There's gotta be some way.
I, I'm not gonna call an attorney. That is total horseshit.
You're gonna tell me that y'all are gonna say, and you're not gonna explain to me?
Well, I tapped everything she said, so I'm just telling you what her answer was.
Well, y'all are digging your own grave here, I'm telling you. People are not happy. They're already not happy and it's just getting worse.
That's unbelievable. That's unbelievable.
As far as.
We're trying to work with you. I'm not trying to argue with anybody. I just wanna see what was done wrong.
As far, okay, hold on. As far as everything in this matter, it all has to be presented to them at the next available council meeting, which will be.
Why can't it be presented after we've had our redress and seen what was presented, what they're, what they're gonna present to us? Because we, we are in it just as much as anybody at the council. The council, like, didn't walk these streets. They didn't do anything. They're not trying to get anything done.
All of it has to be presented to them.
In three minutes, or are we gonna be put on the agenda?
And then we're gonna, we're gonna speak for three minutes and then they move right past it and go do their consent agenda and they're done.
Okay, I'm trying to answer your questions. I'm not trying to argue with you. Every bit of it.
Not arguing, not stating, making statements.
As particular to defect, as outlined in the charter, according to the city attorney, has to be presented to them on the particular defect. So all of that will be.
Then what happens next? When, when do we get to talk about what was wrong, the specific details and, and look at the signatures? Because they're saying they're eligible. There's no clause in the state election code that says.
When you submitted a petition, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay, that's matter of public record.
Okay.
So is the voter roll, matter of public record. I guess there's a certificate that was emailed to y'all, matter of public record. City clerk, the process, she has to present all that to them. It'll be in the council page.
And why did I even get a letter if I'm not gonna be able to participate anything further?
A letter?
Yeah, a certification, whatever you wanna call it, Dean.
I don't, I don't, I mean, other than.
I'm just saying, if it's all just up to the city council and we have nothing to do with it.
It's not up to them.
Well, they're, yeah, she's gonna be like presenting it to them.
Yeah, she has to deliver it to them if it's effective.
If we have no say in that, prior to that, then why did I even get a copy of it until the city council has already been presenting it to? Presented to the, yes.
Did you get, what, did you get a letter?
I got a letter, four pages, that said very unspecific things, okay? They said specifically, yes, we took off six signatures for this reason. I wanna know what six signatures.
Do you want the evidence and the detail?
Yes, I wanna be able to look at it, just like, you know.
All right, well, hold on.
Why do I keep having to go? Do I start talking?
Because you, you, you go off in, in tangent, and I'm trying to follow your questions.
Okay, you just go ahead. Go ahead, Lynn.
You can submit a public, well.
He's getting catty with me, yeah.
No, no, no.
I'm not getting catty with anybody. We can stop this right now. I tried to answer your questions.
Okay.
You can submit a public information request.
Last time I did that, it took the full ten days.
Terry, ho, hold on. We got to know, this is what I'm trying to drill down, is the actual process.
And take it, Brandon.
No, and I get the ten days. They're gonna pull.
You can, you can have a public information request, but this information.
They're gonna pull all the bullshit that we know they're gonna pull.
Will be put on the council agenda, which comes out Friday.
Right.
So to me, that would, that's your right. Government authority, Secretary of State, Elections Division, don't know how much help that would be. Uh, they have a phone number, there's a website. I didn't see.
I've talked to them before. They back off the minute you say there's a home loan charter.
Attorney General, uh, in matters on this, the Attorney General, according to our city attorney, um,
It's the state.
we don't have any ability or authority to request Attorney General opinion on a charter matter. That would have to come from a higher intervening authority as it relates to the election code and the charter. That was her answer. I'm not, you went to law school, not me. I said, well, where's Attorney General opinions on public information and stuff? She goes, well, public information acts as state law, and there's the authority. I'm like, whatever, that doesn't make sense, but that was the answer.
Yeah, I wasn't asking about the Attorney General's opinion. I was just curious if y'all would follow what the Attorney General said y'all were supposed to.
Yeah, if we get, if we get same people coming in, are y'all gonna like follow the, follow what they say this time? Because y'all didn't last time on the Attorney General opinion. That's what he was saying.
You know, it's, it is an opinion, though. It's, it's an attorney's opinion. It's not law.
Right, that's, that was my whole point in saying that we go.
If we go higher, right.
Higher up and the city says, no, we're the ultimate deciding factor of this, so we don't have to listen to that.
We're still gonna do it our way.
It's not gonna be if, it's gonna be when. That's what they always say.
Yeah.
But, um, as far as any other redress process, um, I, I can ask, I mean, it's not real clear in the charter.
I wanna know if I can sit down with Ms., Ms. Sharon, very respectfully. I'm not gonna have a problem with her. I don't, I've never had a problem with her. She's doing her job.
Okay, well, I haven't even gone over there yet.
Okay, well, I'm just saying.
I came out, you asked to see me, what's up?
Okay, and I understand you haven't been over there, but that's all I wanna do.
Be confrontational. I'll go ask her what's going on.
Okay, please.
As far as.
I was very respectful.
Dean, did, have you understood the question that's, that, that it has to do with the total number of voters that they take the percentage from?
So what she's.
You do understand the question? I have nothing to do with those numbers.
If she presents that to the council on Tuesday, it's using the wrong figures.
Excuse me?
It's using the wrong figures. It's, it's twenty-five percent of twenty sixty-seven is a totally different number than what there are, they should be using, Because they need to take all those suspensed voters off there.
But is that, is that?
Suspense voters come off.
Hypothetical, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer.
I'm not either.
I'm not a city clerk. I'm a nobody. I just try to do this job best I can. You can disagree all you want. Where did the number come from? Does that come from the state elections?
The number came, the, the number came from Laura Watkins, okay? She gave me a file, she gave Sharon a file.
Okay, twenty-five percent of the total number is pretty simple math, right?
Without the, without the, without the suspense.
So you say this should be without the suspense?
I can show you the state election code that says that they are not supposed to be included on the number. That's what I'm saying.
So, if, if the number was two thousand and five hundred of those were already suspended, then that means the number in your interpretation. In your interpretation would be fifteen hundred and twenty-five percent of fifteen hundred.
And in the state election codes, yes. Correct.
Um, you know, is that?
And when she's saying I'm six, six.
Is that a point of law? And let me just be.
If she's saying I'm six signatures shy of my goal.
How many?
And then, six. Sixty-six is what she said. I'm sorry, I've got, no, call it sixty-six.
I was like, six?
Sixty-six. Well, that makes a big difference when you put the extra, what, four hundred voters in there?
That are suspended?
That are suspended or are, are actually, uh, canceled. Laura said the C stands for canceled and there's numbers in there that, I got the same file.
Let me, let me make sure I'm clear. I'm not playing games with you, I'm not being catty.
I understand. I'm, I'm, okay.
Y'all are introducing other stuff that, well, and I don't mind going back and calling, do I? I'm not an attorney, Chris.
That's our biggest question.
Not either.
I, I, I call and I ask.
And I'm sorry, I, I would get upset, I would just say, you know, we're totally wrong.
Well, I don't blame you for being upset, but, you know, there is.
And I don't have any bad feelings towards you.
I'm trying to help as far as understand. I'm not gonna violate the law for anything.
I wouldn't ask anybody to.
And, and I'm gonna, but I don't mind asking questions and seeing what's the answer. So you, you, your perception is?
Yes.
There's some suspended voters that shouldn't have been counted towards the total.
All of this, all of the suspended voters.
In Ward one.
None of them, yes, in Ward one. None, and in any, in any recall petition or any petition, you can't use suspended vote, suspense voters. Or canceled voters. And she left us the column in that file that she sent to Sharon and myself, I believe both of us, that's what she said.
This is toward the total number in the calculation determination of twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five percent. That's correct. That's correct.
And it was eight, thirty-hundred.
Because they're using twenty-sixty-seven for the total number.
Hold on, slow down.
Twenty, two oh six seven.
Total number.
That they're using because that's what they gave to.
Twenty-five percent.
The way it can pay for table.
Because they included the suspended and canceled.
I know, so.
Yeah.
You don't have to tell me, what is, what do you think the number should have been?
Eighteen something.
No, 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 the twenty-five percent number.
It's eighteen hundred and something. She has.
It was eighteen twenty-eight was the number.
Alright, so we're gonna do eighteen twenty-eight and twenty-five percent of that, right?
Yes, and it was like four fifty-three, four fifty-seven, four fifty-seven.
Uh-huh.
Here's where I wrote it down when I called.
No, don't, no.
Yeah.
Eighteen hundred and twenty-eight voters without the suspends and without the Cs, those are cancels. I say it makes a big difference because she's saying we need five hundred and whatever. I've, I have to look at the letter again to see exactly.
So, four fifty-seven?
Four fifty-seven.
Think that's right?
I believe so.
Alright.
It's a lot closer than with the suspended voters in there.
So, just innocent question.
Sure.
Play it however you want. What does the state elections official for our county say on that number?
Well, she said that all the suspense voters come out.
I'm, I'm, I mean, legitimate question is.
No, no, she, she said that commissioners, she's giving me, at a commissioners meeting this morning. So if we not get to speak with her, we get to go there first. We get to speak with the other, other two ladies in the office there. Of course, they're not gonna give me any firm, because of course, you know, they're not the final say on it over there. Um, we will talk to Laura.
When I call her back, I'm not cutting you off. When I call her back, you just made me think of something. When I call the city attorney back too, I will ask, well, if they're alleging an error, where's the redress now? Just to, just to see, just to see what she says.
Just to see if we can fix it before, I mean, because.
Well, and.
We're trying to help her, I mean, because she presents good deals, it's gonna be wrong.
Oh, and another thing I'd like to mention on the, on the voter records, because we sat down and just, I mean, did a brief, probably fifteen minute look over, over the deal. So on the records that we got, it's, that Terry got, I'm gonna say, we, I mean, we, we can get along with weeds, use and all that stuff improperly, so, but I mean, so, forgive me if I get my weeds and used and stuff.
Y'all's are fine.
But, y'all's and all that, but, uh, so we're looking at the voter rolls, well, I'm noticing a bunch of dead ones. And then I've noticed, and then we go out and we walk the, the deals, we got places that are, people are registered, no house there. We got, we got all kind of, all kind of defects in the, in the, uh, roll. So if we're gonna be that pickety, um, in throwing things out, then I believe we'd be willing to go walk out and we could prove that these people aren't there. You know, if we're gonna get down to that kinda, uh, problem, you know.
We have addressed Laura, we're gonna decide.
Legally, we can't do that because legally, they're still on the road.
They're still on the rolls?
That's not a debate.
Yeah.
They're abandoned homes, they've been moved forever, but that's not the debate. We're only gonna register.
But there's no way Laura would, there's no way Laura would know that. She just had an order.
No, she couldn't know that.
She's got a process, I know.
Now, if a dead person signed it or somebody claimed to live somewhere, I'm not saying that happened, but if somebody claimed to live somewhere.
This is ridiculous.
Well, it does count against the percentage.
Okay.
So you've got a lot of, if everything is airing in the, in, in, against being able to redress these, uh, people sitting in the seat right here.
I mean, look at this eleven.
It's all airing in their favor too, remain.
There's only fifteen people on the sheet. I've got eleven here that have moved in one day.
Okay.
You know, um, these are the sheets that everybody took with them when they walked the neighborhoods and they made notes for it, so I've made, I've gone through.
Anything else?
I'm just saying, I mean, this is.
I'm listening, I'm just.
I'm just saying, it's not right. All this is such a high standard.
This is interesting. I don't mind calling her back.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, on Tuesday, this is gonna be discussed. It talks about reasonable time addressing a public body.
You're talking about in the public comment part, okay.
Okay, so there's three minutes and then you can address agenda items. The thing is.
You know what you've seen before, right? You get five people to sign up. I'll yield my time to her, you're fifteen minutes.
Yeah, you can see the time there next time.
And we, and that's, and that's fine.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying I've seen it before.
Well, no, I mean, I, I, yeah, I've seen it and then they say, well, it's only for you, if that, the, if it's gonna be discussed.
It's my understanding, just so we're clear, it is presented, there's no action. It is, it's just merely.
That's what I'm saying, it doesn't, we have to redress it, we wait till Tuesday, it's the same thing, there's nothing else.
Well, well, redress to the council, but was, I know, but just hear me out. I mean, if, if the council can't override it, or whatever, then yeah, I mean, I, I see the helpless side of what we're presenting it to.
Well, that's, you know, look, the, the thing is, if there's a water issue, the water guy gets up there. If it's a police, a fire issue, they get up there. This is a specific issue with the petitions. Now, how do you get someone from the public, you know, because it's like a closed meeting? And there has to be a way when you, when the public comes up.
Kansas gets off and says, that's the way it is.
And they just say, you know, it called invited testimony, I've seen it done that way too. That, look, we're not gonna let everybody get up here and rant and rave, but we're gonna have one spokesman come up and address these issues so that it, it becomes an open dialogue that says, now, wait a minute, okay.
Well, it's not, I mean, that, you're describing a public hearing and I haven't, I asked her about a public hearing and she said, the attorney, it's not a public hearing matter. So.
Well, it, okay, then if it's, if it's.
It's a public, but.
If it's not a public hearing matter, then let me just cut, let me ask this.
Okay.
Where does the council get their official mail? So if somebody mails a council, yeah, like, like.
Yeah, I mean, P O Box four sixty, same place we get, like, from T C Q, I mean, it comes into the city, yeah.
Four six oh.
Four six oh, so that's the official city, uh.
Same, same, that is the official city mailbox for legal service, for everything.
Okay, so that is. Perfect. Anybody.
Everything. That is, and it doesn't matter who it's addressed to, you know, mayor and council or whatever, that is the official mailbox.
Okay, well, that makes it easy.
Okay. Anything else you need me to ask her on this?
I just want you to be real clear about it, that that's what's going on.
I'm repeating everything y'all say to her verbatim, asking, these are legitimate questions. I'm not.
You asked me a question, I gave you an answer. That's, that's, I have no problem with it as long as we get, you know, all that information out there.
Although shouldn't be counted at all, the suspended voters shouldn't be counted at all towards the number.
According to the election code. That's correct. Suspended or canceled.
Yep. And I, I, you don't mind, I'm gonna synthesize this down, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
This is the letter that was sent. And the problem is, this right here says it's twenty-five percent of the qualified voters.
Uh-huh.
That's what we're supposed to get, from what we're told to get, those qualified voters, which is like eighteen twenty something. But the city, the city states, and this is the attorney saying this, according to their registered voters, that list is over two hundred something more people. So in his own letter, in the own letter, it's not even correct because they're saying there's, we're going by the.
Oh, the registered, over and flakes account.
There's a qualified, yeah, that's correct.
So they.
Whereas a qualified is just those less than suspended and.
Right, so if, if she's gonna change it, they need to change the way they certify this because this didn't, that's not right. They're staying, the law states.
They say two different things.
They say two different things and.
Thank you, Chris.
And then they put it in writing. That's why I was asking if the attorney read the law.
That's my understa, well. Reviewed that, yes, read the law, I'm not gonna go over.
Yeah, that's true, man. They did review it.
Anything else?
No.
Not chief, I don't do that anymore.
Can't say, we can't call you chief.
I always call you chief while I think about it.
That's your nickname.
I have called you some of them too.
He doesn't wanna hear the name I got.
Look, the thing is, you, you can't make enemies with everybody.
I just know, I know, I know what he did to good people with taking children away and being part of that, and I just can't fake nice with that guy. I'm sorry. You're brave, but I'm not cool. I'm just gonna try to be quiet, is what I'll be.
And it happened, it did happen.
I know.
You know what you're saying, it did happen.
What are you talking about?
He was part of taking his children away and I'm supposed to be nice, I can't, I can't stand.
Well, that's me, I can't even hardly, my nose.
Hey, we have some way to, uh, oh, we, you didn't put us on low power mode, so you got us already kinda.
We got it's in the red.
Mm, mm, you got a, we got a plug right here.
Oh, man, these boys' cameras just keep giving out on us.
You got one in your car, go get it.
Hey, why don't you go get, uh, Amy, see if she wants to talk?
No, I don't, I don't want to do anything with it.
Well, do y'all wanna hang out here, y'all ready to go?
No, we can't.
No, we can't.
I'll give you his answer.
Waiting on him, but.
I'm getting another interview from the attorney. I mean, think about it.
And then I think we need to go to Oregon. Hey, go with the prick.
Brandon.
Maybe she's at a commissioner.
I've heard, she knows that, she's going here, you know?
But, so.
So, no, watch. Only thing I could think of is that they gave her a roll that she didn't realize had, you know, suspended, that's what I was checking against, but how could you not know that? She's the election administrator. She's the one that says I can draw five or six different reports.
I work for her in elections and she's always tooting, oh, I, I buy the book, I this and that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I wanna see her say to me, it's okay to be suspended.
Well, I got her on, I got her on video saying.
I just wanna see her eyes on me.
I got her on video saying that the suspense comes off yesterday, when we had our meeting the other day with.
I'm just very curious if she can justify this seal of approval in front of me, because when she talks to me about all the.
I can't tell if it's charging or not.
Well, she talked to us, the whole meeting we had with her last, last hour and a half, she wasn't gonna do anything to do with this city petition.
Watch it, see, unplug it, see if I got them.
It was all up to the city. She used to work for Parker County, she had every petition, she, she checked it back when she was there, yeah, over there.
Did it do anything?
Yeah, it's charged.
And she checked this one, too.
She checks this one too, yeah. She said, after, after she told us she wasn't gonna do it. You know, she goes, I don't have anything to do with this at all, that's all that was the city.
Open the door.
Now, what we have out here is, uh, Amy Sabatini Bearden, baby mama, something or other.
I'm leaving her, I'm leaving her, she lives in. I can't take it.
And, uh. And then we also had the, the guy from the Weatherford Democrat.
I made the mistake of thinking that she would be reasonable last week.
Yeah, the Weatherford Democrat.
Oh, Glenn wasn't gonna show up, he did, he did contact me this morning and say.
That is Glenn, isn't it?
Well, he said he was gonna go to the commissioners meeting first, he said, if, 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 if they have time. And I said, well, I didn't tell anybody else about it, I don't plan on it either, as far as Amy or Amy.
It's tears again.
Fun.
I want to go over the petitions that I turned in and see what was wrong with them.
Pick that house and scam her and run another scam on the, on the poor people of Mineral Wells.
Oh, um, on the petition?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I just asked if I could sit down and go over the petitions and look at the signatures and, you know, if she can't read some of them, I know I can, because I can read everyone, everyone along there.
She vacated their positions, she wouldn't even sit down.
And I checked them back to the voter rolls and I just wanted, I thought we'd do it together maybe, you know? Because there is obviously a difference of opinion, because we had more than enough, as far as we could tell.
What, y'all want to?
They're using, Jason, they're using a different number than they should be using, uh, the total number of voters they're using, the suspense voters.
Oh, come on, man, Sharon's, all your secrets and details. No, I, I thought it was, uh, the, uh, oh, come on, Amy.
Brandon, I have no desire to be in your film work.
Well, I know, but you like to put us in yours.
Well, I, I have a job, so.
Well, so do we.
Okay.
And we're not able to do it because we can't depend on area news to get it done.
What's going on?
You, you got every opportunity to start your own news or we're gonna.
Oh, we're doing it right here. We're doing it right here.
Dog catcher, you gotta, had to re, had to re-up, dog catcher.
So Glenn, were they able to tell you what the, what the situation is?
Um, yes.
Okay.
I talked to Ms. McFadden.
Okay.
Um, what happens now with you guys?
Well, that's, we're waiting to hear back from, uh, Dean Sullivan right now. Basically, what we're not being able, what we're not getting is, um, a way to correct any deficiencies in the petition. And that's kind of a, a general principle of, you know, settling a dispute is, hey, if there's something wrong, then you should, there should be a process and a procedure to do so.
Who, who told you what procedure to follow and how did you all, um, what, what's the question I'm trying to ask?
What the steps to.
Yeah, what, how, how did you find out what the steps you were supposed to take were?
Uh, regarding the petition or.
The recall, petition for the recall.
Okay, and I'll, I'll tell you, Terry's the one who headed that up, but basically it's in the charter, you know, that you gotta have. The discrepancy that we're dealing with and they probably shared with you is you had to have twenty-five percent of qualified voters sign a petition. Now, what the city was, I think y'all quoted in the paper was, it's two thousand and change on, uh, the voters. But, you have to take out.
No, I'm, I'm. That's a lot of you guys had it.
You have to take out the canceled and the suspended people on that list, which brings the number down to like eighteen hundred and whatever, okay? What the city did whenever they sent a letter, and I have not written, read the letter, but they sent it to Terry, that, um.
Always get over something.
They, one of the, one of the issues, they took out seven people that were on the suspended list. But it's what I will call, and you can quote me on this, I call it a reverse double dip, okay? So, they're, they're taking, because Mineral Wells is known and has a very long history of double dipping, okay? So I'll call it a reverse double dip.
Double dipping in what?
Uh, pretty much anything and everything. It's kinda like, uh, well, I'll give you an example, in the past, uh, the now defunct Industrial Foundation Area Growth Council, what they would do is they would buy these properties and it would, it would switch back and forth between the city and some, uh, organization they would bring here with the Texas Capital Fund. And, uh, hey, Lynn, I've got that charger in the truck, it's on the floorboard if you wanna get it. So what they would do is they would trade this same property, and it was a recycled property, and this is why I call it a double dip, they would recycle the same as that property, like the ammo plant. They would sell it to somebody, like the guy who's there, let's just use him as an example. He would say, well, we're gonna bring in five hundred jobs and do all this stuff, knowing full well the guy's not gonna be able to do it. And then they would be, i- i- they would be able to, uh.
How, how did they know that he wasn't gonna be able to do that?
Well, usually they have a history of it. Like that guy, he, he set up the same thing in Flugerville before they brought him here. And, and, you know, look, if it happens once, it's a mistake, happens twice, it's my bad. After three or four times, it's a pattern. It's a pattern that repeats itself and you gotta say, wait a minute, are these people incompetent or are, are they corrupt?
Are we talking about the same man who had a lawsuit up in the state of New York for taking money for home builders and then not building their homes? Is this the same guy? What's his name that you're speaking of? You, you, you're talking about a particular man?
Well, now, I don't know if he did that there, I just heard about the deal in Flugerville.
What ma, what's the man's name? Tell me his name again.
Uh, I, I just know him as ammo plant man. So.
Ammo, what, paracels buddy, what's his name?
I don't know, whatever his name is.
Brandon, you know his name.
Uh, is it Matt?
Matt Campbell.
Matt, okay, there you go, Matt Campbell.
Thank you, thank you, Matt Campbell, okay.
Thank you, I mean, I'm on the spot. I mean, I got, I got the shakes and everything.
I know, I, I knew it probably doesn't matter.
Now, if he did, but, but if he did that, that just goes to justify what I'm saying.
Why didn't they vet him beforehand?
So now it's just a crook crooking a crook.
Double crook.
Yeah, we're double, we're double dipping on the crooked, so. This is just an, I mean, I, I don't know how long you have for, to talk about this stuff, because it's, it's endless, but.
I just wanna know what you're doing next, and it sounds like you're ready to get instruction on how to either start over or restart.
Okay, so, yeah, and, alright, so let's, let's address that specifically. So we came down here, talked to Sharon about what that process and procedure is.
How do I know this thing's charged? Oh, okay.
And that's working. So.
How much, Dean?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so this stuff is supposed to be written down, but, and, and we, we should be able to see it. What is the process? What is the procedure? But what we've been instructed by, uh, Dean Sullivan, who has been extremely helpful, um, and patient through this process, because Sharon definitely wasn't, um, is, oh, you had to go to the city attorney. And it, it really falls, that Sharon's job falls under the, uh, direction of the council. She does not answer to the city manager. Now, I'm taking that as Dean's word. So what's the next step? Well, we really don't know, because if there was a discrepancy within the petition signatures, there should be a, a time period to fix those discrepancies. there should be a, a time period to fix those discrepancies.
So you're wanting an opportunity, so you've been told your signatures aren't valid enough, and you're wanting, you're wanting more time to go back and fix those signatures?
Well...
Or not fix, correct them?
Well, what we want to do is we...
Vet, vet how they think they're not correct.
Yes, I would say so, but with the understanding that we start with the fact that the city is counting suspended and canceled voters as part of the qualified voter list. So you first have to take those people off.
So you're saying they were counted in, they're two thousand, that you had to have...
Well, they're, the city's...
Of the percentage.
Yes, so the, so the city's saying that we need two thousand, um, the twenty-five percent
Of two thousand.
Is coming off the two thousand and not off, off the eighteen hundred. Okay, now, so, and I don't, I don't know for sure, Amy, but I do think that there's about two thousand, or twenty thousand registered voters within the city limits, when there's only about fourteen thousand people living here.
You think that there's twenty thousand registered voters in the city of Mineral Wells, but actually only fourteen thousand people that live here according to the census from this last year, or where, where are you getting your data from?
And, and again, I do defer to Terry. She said the fourteen, and I don't have specifics. But I do know that while I was walking the streets, the other folks were walking the streets, and Lynn and I just, for about, I don't know, what, we just sit down for about thirty minutes?
Fifty or twenty minutes.
We found dead people. And then what, one of the other things we did is we cross-referenced people who were, uh, supposedly qualified voters, I'm gonna use that term, qualified voters, within the city of Mineral Wells. And then we cross-referenced that against the, the Secretary of State. They have a database, you put the name in, date of birth, and there may have been a, you know, there's, uh, three, I think there's three different ways you can, uh, verify a voter with combination of information. We put them in, and they wouldn't come up. Now, benefit of the doubt, they may, you may have to have a, eh, maybe it was a misspelling of the name when, at the driver, at the DMV, or wherever they filled out their voter card. That could have been a typo. And then when we cross-reference, it doesn't pull up.
As a match.
Right, it wouldn't pull up as a match, so that's a possibility. But within thirty minutes, we found at least a dozen of those. So what, all we're saying is, we just want an equal playing field. We want an equal playing field with the numbers. And, eh, you know, there was one, one lady in particular, who was a registered voter, and she'd lived in the ward for several years. She was not on the list. And she actually helped us get like five or six of the signatures. Well, we go to Laura, and we said, look, and she said, oh, man, it's a, and, and again, it was a typo. Yes, she's a registered voter, but it was input into the, she was input into a different ward, and so it had to be fixed. So there's a lot of discrepancies within the voter list itself. And I'll, and I'll say, that has nothing to do with the city, it really doesn't. And it, and I'm not trying to throw shade on, uh, Laura, the election officer.
Well, mistakes happen, I mean, that's an easy mistake.
Exactly. But it's, it's kind of like, uh, you know, we're housing, we're trying to house this preacher. And, you know, I mentioned the, the jot in the tittle of the law. Well, that's trying to hold somebody to every single point. And I said that to someone at the council meeting, and they said, well, I don't know what that means. And I said, well, uh, Bill, Bill Clinton's, uh, translation of that was, we gotta, I don't, I need to know what the definition of is is. So, all I'm getting at is, when I say that, this city council, if we're, if we're trying to nail down, uh, and, and, and say, well, uh, we're not gonna kick him out, we're not gonna remove him from office, when you have an overwhelming voice from the people saying, we don't like what you're doing, we want you to step down, we want you to get out.
What was it that people didn't like that was he was due? Because, because I've, um, I've been following a little bit, and I, I do know that there have been a couple of people that have alluded that you weren't real forthcoming as to why you were actually there. You were more, you were more talking about water rates instead of actually his, um, actions as a city council member. Does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I, I can understand.
Ultimately, when you sign your name, it doesn't matter what you've signed your name to, it's your fault if you've signed your name.
So you're curious about how it was presented to the signature?
Yeah, I mean, I'm curious how, because some people have said that the way you presented it wasn't...
It had a four-point, fit with the legal phrases, statement of problems with the guy.
Yeah, see, I never saw your four-point.
I, I got a copy.
That was presented to every signature person?
Yeah, I mean, and, and I would say...
And most of them, I, I, I did some walking myself, I didn't get a whole lot of signatures, maybe twenty or thirty, but that, that put me in face of some that said no, and some that, you know, well, I don't feel comfortable signing or having my face, I'm afraid I get, uh,
Retaliated.
Retaliated, you know, against, like, this happened a lot around here. But most of them that, that signed had several different other issues that they already were, man, they were ready to get, where, hey, no, I'm done talking, where do I sign? Hey, my brother, he'll sign it, he lives over here, but he, oh, wait, well, he's not in that ward. You know, so it was, it surprised me, even though I know, you know, I'm on this, uh, team trying to get this done, it even surprised me how fired up that the, that...
And, and there were people as we, and I didn't get that many signatures, but I'll say this, there were people as we were walking, they were mad because they couldn't sign, because they weren't registered voters.
Right.
Because, and, and yes, uh, I, I heard the same complaint that you did. But I made it clear, look, this is the house, the preacher man, uh, Gerald Tomlin, and this is what he's done. And the biggest thing...
A no caller.
Look, eh, people can read why we're wanting to bring him out, and I'll just say, when you're hitting people with a hundred and fifty percent increase in the water bill, for this community that is impoverished, that's a lot of money. It is.
Have you offered solutions, or do you guys have any ideas of what other, what other ways we can, we can make this water situation get better?
Absolutely, thank you for asking that. Uh, and this is not stuff that's necessarily our idea. But number one, you gotta stop the bleeding, and that is, you're losing seventy-five percent of the water before it hits a water tap. I was at PK, um, this past weekend, lake's almost full. And we're in, what, a stage, whatever drought, you know, it's a drought. The water's full. When you go back and you look at when that lake was, um, drained, there are two books written, um, about that.
When PK was drained?
When PK was drained, everybody said, oh, they gotta send it down to, uh, uh,
Granbury?
Granbury and whatnot. But, and I, I didn't know this until somebody, uh, actually it was within a government agency that sent it to me, and said, hey, check out this book, I bought the book.
A no caller.
But what they're alluding to is the fact that, uh, it was an inside job by Rick Perry and, and some other guys to drain that lake, which lowered the property values. They came in and bought that, bought the property for pennies on the dollar, and then resold it to the property, to the people who had the leases. And, and the guy that I was at his house...
I owned the, that's not exactly true. I owned how, I owned property there out there. They didn't drain that lake and then sell off the property. That's not how it went, Brandon, I owned property out there.
Eh, well...
And it was divested by Patterson.
Right, and the lake water went down...
But they didn't drain it.
Okay, they're not...
You're saying they drained it.
How do you drain a lake?
They didn't drain the lake, that's, that's giving misinformation.
The lake, the water went, the water went out of the dam. The water went out of the, out of the dam, okay? The water went out of the dam. This is not gonna be an official thing, that, oh, we drained the lake so we could drop the property values. I'm not saying that. This is what I'm saying, when it comes to public corruption, it's not headline news. Hey, guys, this is what we're doing. It's not, hey, we're gonna recycle this same building ten times, they're not gonna say that. Shucks, the business went out of, out of, uh, business again, and dang, we ended up with it. Wow, guess what, we'll do it again. It's the same thing with that lake. And the guy that I met with, he didn't know why this guy, I was going to look at him, doing some repairs on his house, and I asked him about it. I said, hey, man, what happened? He said, oh, yeah, this was land that I had basically already po- bought, you know, via the lease.
I'm just waiting on her to call back from the state on that number we were talking about, so I'm not...
No, that's cool, we're, we're just hanging out, no, we're, we're not...
I'm waiting, they're calling Austin.
Hey, no hurry, thank you, chief.
You wanna get chatted?
Thank you.
Step outside and vape.
Okay.
But...
I might need to come with you.
Are, are y'all, was Tomlin gonna be the first?
Oh, yeah, he's just the first, but the, but the thing is, uh, you're asking me, I, I really need to just drill down and answer your question, okay? Your question was, what's the steps? We don't know, because we were told to go to the city attorney and ask them. Well, the city attorney does not work for us. And then they said, well, the, the city clerk, she's in charge, and so she just bounced out. And so, we're just gonna have to put this in writing, submit it to them, and then go from there. I mean, I don't know. We, technically, we should have a, a period of time to fix it, to know what the deficiencies are, and then correct them, if it's on our side. And then, in all fairness, the city needs the same opportunity.
Isn't that what that five days for them was? You're saying, you're saying that you, you want an opportunity to fix it, and then the city should be, have an opportunity to, to, to verify what you've done? Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
Uh, no, no, kind of, but not quite. Because they actually have their own, uh, mistakes by including the suspended and canceled voters in the total qualified number.
Okay, so I wanna make sure, so your beef is that the number that you were given is not really an accurate number, because you're saying some of those voters, that two thousand number, uh, has, has suspended voters, and it should have been a lower number, an eighteen hundred or something?
Eighteen hundred and change.
So your percentage should have been smaller that you had to get, is what your beef is, is what I'm understanding?
Twenty-five percent would be fewer people.
Right.
Yeah. And then, and then on the same time...
And do you have that number? Do you, do you have it?
Oh, yeah, well, it came from, uh, Laura Watkins at the...
But do you have enough signatures to meet that number?
I think so, but here's the other issue, so that's one, eh, issue one. Number two, we don't know who they're saying were not qualified voters. We only know...
They're not, they're not telling you, this is not right, this is not right.
Right, they're not saying, hey, uh, we went through and we numbered every voter, and voters one, ten, two hundred, three hundred.
You're not getting that.
We're not getting, we don't have any clue.
So you got no way to correct?
Correct.
Don't know where to look to correct it?
Mm-mm.
Bad editing.
Or verify that what they did is even correct, you know? Which I thought the, the strangest thing to me was whenever she just abandoned her post, and just Terry was about, you know, wanting to, which I think is reasonable, to, to sit down and say, okay, I brought you this, you know, and you said, now, wait a minute. This isn't right, this isn't right, oh, okay, you know, I mean, you, you, you know, I think that's more than, more than fair to...
Well, and, and the thing is, we're trying, there has to be trust restored between the people and their government. And whenever the last time, when we were in here with Terry, and y'all were here, to turn in the petitions, there was what, five hundred and seventy-two, I believe, was the number?
Five seventy-one, five seventy-two, somewhere right around there, yeah.
Right in there. Well, she, Sharon, she being Sharon, the, the secretary, says, oh, well, I only counted five hundred and forty-two, or thirty-five, whatever she said, it was thirty or forty less than what Terry had counted. So we go in here and we sit down, she brings her calculator with the, with a paper tape, and guess what? She and Terry agreed on the number, which was thirty or forty more. So we, if we did not have a pattern and practice of the city's shenanigans on this stuff, we wouldn't want, we, we wouldn't be down here. And Gerald Tomlin would not be getting recalled. Go, we don't wanna hold you up from vaping.
You get caused, this is all causing me much...
Cut that, Jones. I smoked for twenty-seven years.
No, it's okay, hey, it's better than...
I just, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go, I'm turning off, are you off? Can you, can you, can you turn it off? Can we have a conversation off record?
He's gonna have to answer.
Do what?
He's just waiting for a phone call to give you an answer. I'll wait another ten minutes.
I, I turn.
Yeah, well, here, if you...
It's locked, who are you here?
She don't want me in there.
Oh, it's okay, I'm just gonna put this, I'll come back and talk to you.
What did Dean say?
Uh, he, he's just waiting to hear back. Are you still running live?
Yes, this is live.
Well, don't put it over here, put it over there somewhere.
Okay, you got it, okay, I used to...
No.
I'm sorry, not trying to interrupt you.
Yeah, we're, we're talking strategy.
Oh, you, you won't, here, I can get out of here. That's no, no, that's, that's totally cool, I'm good with that.
What's the long-term goal? I mean, Brandon, we have to have water.
I agree.
We have to have water. I don't wanna pay three hundred dollar water bills. I've had to, I've lived in communities, and it sucks to do that.
Well, and listen, I told, I said that from again. All right, I came in and I talked to Dean, um, for, I don't know, an hour? Maybe an hour and a half, I mean, he talked, he'll talk to you as long as you want.
Yeah.
And that's all I respect him.
You don't wanna be on video, right?
No, I don't, we're just having an off-record, you know, same.
Well, they're doing the same thing in there too, so, I can go outside.
Maybe you go talk to Glenn.
Yeah.
But, no, I'm, I'm with you, okay?
Everybody's wanting to have off-the-record conversations. That's fine with me, I've got... No, we're being recorded here, so... Oh, I can move it down here, I don't know. But you never can trust these, they'll, they'll pick up. I guess... Uh...
I'm gonna stop it. I'll just go in, I'll stop there.
I, I, I can't remember exactly what it was, but I was, I was, I didn't clear it all. We know enough because we've done enough.
You're saying down off. Cause you can't speak to anything that's not on the agenda here after they pass those rules.
But, but like I say, if that goes.
Our personal camera's running, but the live is not live.
What are they yakking about?
When we did it with each other, called them out to each other, there was like, oh no. All right. Well, I went back and checked them again, see if they were even.
I'm gonna just restart it whenever Dean comes out.
The numbers were first, when she's off, like a couple of days ago.
Right, yeah, I remember.
I don't remember what it was coming out, but.
You found more?
Oh yeah, I went back and checked them. I found that they were good for us. They were on there. They were on her list too, but they didn't have the right names. They like, they had Lorena Dow, wow, she signed her name, all right. Well, on the voter roll, it's Lorena Fox hyphen Dow. So we never found it. We looked for Dow, that's all we looked for. I pulled her up by, by her birthday and, and the address. At first I looked for the address, the, the number of the address, the street address, whatever. And just went through the entire document, you know, just hitting search, 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 search.
And she does not want to sit with you. She does not want to sit with you. You've combed through these a few times, you know?
I did them three times last night.
Yeah. Please sit down with me. It's all in my head.
Did Marcy ever get the email from Jason about the bond scandal?
Uh, I have a little bit of it, but not on, well, she's asking for the twelve million is what she's wanting on. We got it on the prior, prior stuff and, uh. Yeah, we got all that, but she's like, no, I want the one for the turkey feet. This, this, this bond you're talking about, dude.
No, this is live, right?
We'll have to restart that when he goes back.
It's not on anymore, right?
No, I turned it off out there.
I thought I heard you saying that when you came in.
Yeah, that, that now.
I don't even know why.
Our ca, our per, our camera we use is on, but not the one that. This news, news guy seems.
Glenn? Yeah, he doesn't write anything I give him.
He's, he's very city oriented, but he's better than some of them, better than some of them. In fact, that's what got me in trouble.
Doesn't have very big foot shoes to fill, so.
That's what got me, that's what got me in trouble. That's what got me in trouble on the, on the Amy front, on the Amy front because. He referred an article when we first got here and I said, hey, not too bad. He at least said some fruit, some true things.
He did say.
And I said, but he's not like all the fluff we usually get from these people around here, all the other news media.
He wrote something and I think it was on this deal.
It's so true.
Wasn't, it wasn't.
Used the word to me. She said, I know, I'm just writing fluff pieces right now. And so that was the first thing that came to my mind. I was like, what is all these little fluff pieces? Man, that was the beginning of the end right there.
Hasn't it been the end for a while though?
I'm just so proud of somebody.
I always got along with her though, cause I mean, you know, as long as she was in my everyday life, I didn't have to.
So what is your, your big difference or agree, disagreeing with Amy?
Oh, they just hate each other. That's his girlfriend.
Don't say that word. That's the only, no, that's the only word that's off limits in my world. It makes my body go wild.
That's what she is.
So just say the C. It could literally.
Why? Don't you remember, don't you correlate C with that word?
Yes, that's fine, or.
But, but it's different because it's just a C.
What's the worst word?
I'm glad I.
I can say the F word. I know, I just said that word. Oh, I, I agree with you, but just don't say the word.
Only one I know worse is my own flesh and blood sister. And she's worse.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But this one just, this one, this one over here, she enjoys being hateful. I mean, she really does. She, she feels powerful with it, you know?
But I'm like.
It makes me just feel horrible inside of me.
Good. That's what I intended to do.
That was what I made this mistake though, about my feelings, you know?
Makes me want to evacuate.
That's why I use that particular word.
How much longer is this gonna take, um?
I was so upset sometime, one time somebody called me a bitch.
Figure out something to do with my car.
And I was just like.
It was a girl that did it.
It was actually a guy that did it. I used to play competitive tennis.
Yeah.
And they had us up on the line and we're supposed to hit, you know, the guys at the net. And I, you know, I would swat one out. And I, I hit him. I did, it's his fault. He's gotta block it, block it. And he goes, you're a bitch. And I'm like. And I run off and I go.
I just always tell him, I'll be the best bitch you ever saw.
And then my coach reamed him out. You don't call her that. He's like, she meant to hit me.
Like that song, that, what is it, Mobamba? Y'all, y'all won't know what I'm talking, y'all won't even know. Y'all won't even know what I'm talking about.
How much he didn't like it, you know?
Y'all won't even know what I'm talking about, but one of my favorite songs is that Mobamba where he says, bitch, in the background, every few seconds, he's like, bitch. I just love the way he says it. I'll be, I'll be with, bitch.
It's, yeah.
Instead of going, boo, boo, whatever, he's like, bitch, as he's signing the bat.
So now Christopher's listening to her.
Yeah, I just know her.
You don't want to tangle with her?
No, I don't.
I can, but it's like I said, I don't enjoy it. I feel worse afterwards. And she just feels like she's just like climbed a mountain or something, you know?
Oh, she's done good with me. She's ignored me. We went, see, we're classmates.
See, I can handle it. I can handle that. I can handle that, the ignoring part, but it's when she wants to bring you front and center, you know, and she's just like.
She was horrible at that protest.
She's horrible. She's just plain horrible, period.
She was so mean to Joe. Demeaning.
I know. She thinks she's better than everybody else.
Oh, I did not. That was it. And Leah, she did the same thing to Leah and then I went after her.
That whole, this whole, everybody that sits in those chairs and has anything to do with this little city, treats them all the same way. They treat them all the same way, they, with derision. We're, we're, we're so many different levels below them, yeah.
She, she did that, I mean.
On a whole nother level.
It was not right. It's not right.
You know they're recording all.
I know. I told her they had mics in here. She was getting her strategy out a minute ago. I was like, hey, girl, settle down.
And she goes.
You told me you wouldn't repeat that.
Kind of was safe with you, Christopher.
Then they'll make that clerk that they not supposed to be able to tell what to do, listen to.
Yeah, right.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So I'm like.
But they, they can't tell her what to do.
That's so crazy. He's the only one that serves the will of the council. He, it says so in the charter. He serves at the will of the council. Everyone else reports to him.
I would think she's gotten to be.
That's why I'm not.
Everyone else reports to him.
Absolute zero sense to have a city clerk that doesn't report to the city manager.
Yeah, well, it's, it's bullshit.
That's why I said I'm not a fan. So he plays.
It's also saying why I said I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah, I'm not a fan because he plays both sides so beautifully.
Oh, he's, it's intentional. It's like the other day when we were up here, he was going. When they weren't gonna give me the petitions, when they weren't gonna give me the petitions, he kept saying.
There he is.
He kept saying, I'm not a city clerk.
Hey, but, what are you doing?
Yeah, it needs to be cleared up.
Oh, did it die?
Good.
Don't ever put that.
You rolling now?
No, it's, it.
No, it's dead. It's still, it's, it's in juice or something.
I'm plugging in.
He's saying he wants to call me back later this afternoon because they're gonna have to see how they're gonna clean it up.
Attorney's looking at something right now. I talked to Laura, so.
Just put your side, you backed me up on that suspense.
Everything you said.
Thank you.
Did they give any indication what cleaned it up means?
Come on, Christopher.
Well, they've already put it right.
Anything to do with this. I listen, I'm trying to.
I know, I know.
Figure out, okay, Laura, what'd you say?
I mean, we were just talking.
What was written? I saw that letter now. Okay, city attorney, earn your money.
Cause you done done it wrong.
I see, I see, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defend. I'm gonna defend what I saw, which was the number on that big spreadsheet thingy. And I could see how innocent mistake, you don't know the law or whatever.
Sure.
Do the simple math, take your shoes off, but I'm not gonna make excuses. Let me see what the attorney comes back.
If I know what it says in the charter, then I should know, you know, the people that are doing it.
Well, you could have closed your door and not listened, and I appreciate it.
Let's start over.
I re, yes.
Glenn's rolling the whole time.
Thank you.
No, it's not, it's not rolling.
Thank you.
I'm not an ass, even though some people don't like the way I do my job, but I try to help.
You could have shut the door and said, you know.
You what?
No, I appreciate it.
I said, you just got a bad job.
I, I got some history on the old city manager and I appreciate you opening the door.
I'm not.
I do. I mean it. I appreciate it. Cause we would have had to wait, it would have been another long wait for city council meeting.
I'm gonna tell you all this right now. I'm not sure that you're not gonna have to wait till Tuesday regardless because of how it works.
Sure.
But I am dissatisfied enough that.
Very dissatisfied with that answer though.
Me too.
With my answer?
Yeah, as far as, as far as, like, if you want to counsel, because we know how it works.
Even if it goes to a special election, they still got a job to do.
Well, they.
So regardless, it still has to go before them.
For us, their obligation to us.
But if it's, it, it still has to go before them, whether it's for or against you.
I'm still saying, we, we know how that goes though, like Brendan said, with our limited amount of speaking time or whatever. I mean, I just don't see how that, we're gonna have an open discussion.
That's a whole nother, I didn't start that either, so.
Okay.
I try to do what I can do. Got it all? You're good? You're rolling?
Is it good?
I could never get his.
It's not going. It's really not. I don't need to get it off any minute ago. Smile, Dean, smile for the cameras. See, the other one, we got that, we got that one rolling.
Seven years of doing that all the time. Really scary.
I mean, there's two of them though. There's one back.
So I'll check, um, you know, but I'll try to, I'll try to. I'll try to have her email you back or.
I do appreciate it. I just, I mean, when I know something, I know something.
Don't worry, you know?
I just didn't like being kind of swatted off with.
And that, that.
That's right.
Well, it wasn't swatting off.
I didn't say it was you, you know?
No.
But the door got slammed in my face.
She swatted. She swatted.
The door, the door slat got slammed in my face.
Yeah, she swatted.
It's not, I got enough in the charter and, and it's like, this ain't my rodeo. I don't mind checking though, I never have. You know, what are they gonna do?
I still think you're the only one that serves at the will of the council though. The rest of them, I'll report to you.
Operationally, I wouldn't disagree with you, but when it comes to the authority as far as, I'm telling you. There, there's four people that group of seven can hire or fire. Me, city manager, excuse me, city clerk, city judge, city attorney. So in that supervisor-subordinate relationship and on this charter issue, I would argue with you not to be argumentative. Operationally, day-to-day stuff, yeah, probably for supervision.
They wear different hats.
But, but when it comes to this stuff, that, that ain't, and I'm not copping out, I'm serious. I, I always speak from the heart to y'all. I don't see it that way, not on this kind of stuff, because that's that person's job. Just like if our city attorney's giving us bad advice. It don't work for me, right? These are, there's only four appointed positions by that body in the charter, in the, in.
I understand, because they wear different hats. They have to, things that they report to you for.
Operational, budgetary.
Council also, so I understand what you're saying. I'm not arguing that.
It's not me. Same thing with that executive session stuff that comes out of the city attorney. And I just put whatever people give me. I do make the agenda as far as the items, yes.
Do they stop that two council members?
Yes.
Brandon, you should have started this video.
Put something on the agenda. You know, that rule they put in effect.
Before you went to sit down, you should have started.
Two council members have to be in favor.
I've got it all. This is, this is new. I'm not being ignorant. This is what, I don't.
No, when I was mayor, after I put on some agenda items, they said that they voted and said, no, it has to be two council members. To put any agenda item on, period.
I've never heard that. I'm not saying it's not. I've never heard that.
Yeah, I said, they took a vote on it.
They kept me from doing all the agendas.
They've never asked me to put a snowplow, I mean, since I've been here, it's just.
You know why I did that though, is because he was gonna make a special meeting about the mail claim. And he told him about it. And so Chris decided to where he couldn't.
Yeah, that happened here.
Two people on the agenda items.
Cause we had already complained. I didn't know.
I know.
I didn't know that we had council of jurisdiction over the attorneys. Because that's interesting, because I went through five attorneys when I was mayor.
Yeah, I don't.
And it was never any, I didn't want to see the first attorney leave. He was the one that was, the one that told me, hey, don't sign that with a ten-foot pole. That's illegal. What the city's doing. And then that, that, that attorney was gone the very next meeting.
Yeah.
And then they brought in the last four.
I mean, the city attorney's not a person. It's a firm that's been a debate.
That's true.
Especially since post-COVID and staffing.
They can only vote on TML happening. They can't have their own, because you're saying the city council has authority over the attorneys.
The city attorney. There's only one city attorney, which is a firm, which is Mesr Ford. Not the TML stuff, all that other is like insurance agents.
I wouldn't, I don't think all they were all Mesr Ford or something. Cause I mean, I went before the attorney, before that.
They were the same agents.
It's been Mesr Ford since George Alford retired. Now, Fran was here because that's who, okay.
You're right about that. It was all the same attorneys.
Right or wrong?
They just would send out new ones. They would just send out a new one.
Trying to decide, oh, we said no, we could have eliminated just one attorney, but it'd have to be to the firm.
It's the whole firm.
It was eighty Mesr.
I knew, I knew.
Is with that firm, because every time that. Well, no, they've changed that name several times. Now it's just down to two names. Where we started, it's kind of. Every time they change, we gotta do something to change the title of our city attorney, so. Anything else? All right. I'll try to get you something today, uh, or at least have them get you something.
Well, I'll be waiting.
Like I told Brenda the other night on that city manager deal. Just the contract evaluation that's required.
Oh, well, I, I see. I've heard they're just giving you a review or something.
That's what I mean, the evaluation.
That's right, yeah, your contract.
And just.
Well, I knew it was about time for one anyway.
I won't tell you what was said, but I don't, if you got questions, I'll answer your question.
I don't think they've ever given anybody a review before.
Uh, what's his name that did? Not, not Howerton, but everybody else has had one since then.
Well, I mean, we put in one. Just Christians. Well, we had Marcy, we made Christians.
Margie got one through her contract, uh.
Oh, sure. Yeah, cause she's a contractor.
Well, I did a damn report card. I'm ready to leave now.
We don't need another city manager right now.
You got three hundred and thirty-nine business days. Mark it down. That's fat, not negotiable.
Thirty-nine business days?
Left on my contract.
Okay.
That's it.
So they just renewed it?
No.
Oh, that's right, yeah, I forgot. I forgot. I'd be right.
That's it, Sarah. You're done.
I, I hear that, I really do.
Not being ugly, but.
Well, no, I, I don't, I don't.
I've been doing this for two-thirds of my life, sir, and a couple. My dad died at sixty-two and, you know, her relatives, any indication?
I know.
I think I deserve at least one year to live.
Last petition's been about.
That's the only, but, you know, seriously, it's a problem when you retire, a lot of people die.
No, I got stuff to do. I think they die when they lose their purpose, but I got lots of stuff to do.
Still moving around doing, living.
Don't forget I had a year and a half.
I kind of feel like that's what happened to my mom when she quit teaching. I mean, I, cause I warned her, I said, Mom, I don't see a good idea.
Well, I say all the laws, we, people, as much, some people hate it. Uh, it's what kept me alive for a long time, you know, when I first, when I first moved back to town, you know?
But, but seriously, I.
And we're just having something to do.
You know? Hopefully we, we can get it cleaned up.
I just, I just think about having another somebody like Christiansen come in. I mean, that man was just, oh, I'm sorry, it's all. He was just hateful. He was just mean. I mean, he's a lot of behavior. I don't enjoy that. I can do that.
Getting upset with me, I, I don't. You don't need to get upset with me.
It's just, it's hard.
They'll have your theater and I respect that. Always been respectful, but if, if you start acting up, I'm not, I don't have to stand.
I wasn't acting up.
No, but I'm just saying that I, I do have a, cause I never yell at anybody. I've never helped people all the time.
You're gonna be able to hear me say a foul word to you.
I know, but I'm not gonna be that person that you're.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Experience. I'm not gonna be okay.
Well, I know, that's why I said I do, you see, you're going, you know, because.
No, but I told you what, it's nothing personal. I'm gonna do all I can to help. And if it doesn't help, then whatever, but.
I just don't even know if anything will help at this point. It's just, it's so frustrating.
After thirty-three decades of.
I know, I know.
Then, you know?
Oh, I know. I grew up here. I was born here. My, my, my dad was born here, so I've been here a while.
Fix it now.
I know.
Then why are we kidding ourselves anymore?
Okay, so who, who are we talking about?
We're as far as.
Wow, that's a good one.
And I think it's the How. High line from the lake to the location.
You talking about down the creek? Okay.
Marcy's supposed to be sitting up something with me to talk to.
I'm thinking about like.
I mean, why, why is that not part of the program?
expense, probably.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna say.
But is that following or kind of like how works the things?
It's all water mysteries.
Everything's hard to deal with.
The other thing, I mean, the city page is a. So, really, I mean, the city pays the bill for the district, but nothing for the city starts until that Brazos pump station where a violation started, that's part of the treatment process.
Okay, so, so basically, from the lift station, uh.
From the pump station, lift stations for sewer, not being ugly to you, but.
Brazos pump station.
Brazos pump station.
The, the one where in?
Uh, yeah, down.
Yeah, the one where it like picks up, or talking about that.
Correct, the wet well.
So, the wet well, that's where y'all start?
That's where a violation occurs, that is where our.
Your current.
That's where we get in trouble.
Not in your.
Is there, I'm not usually inspiring real numbers on the Turkey Peak as far as the dam cost, what, what the.
Everything we broke down, it'll be, there'll be a little bit more. There'll be a little bit more in the, on the joint meeting next Tuesday, a little bit more information.
I just don't understand how you guys are like planning a bond and getting all this together if you don't have.
Oh, okay.
Whatever, it is a bond, it is a bond, it's a revenue bond.
Appreciate your time.
But basically, how are you doing that when you haven't even set up the bond yet?
We have the cost estimates from the engineer, and you'll see that if you were to come over to Purdue next, next Tuesday at the joint meeting, which is before the council meeting.
What time will they report to the chief?
Where?
Uh, they, they have their cost estimate scheduled and their timeline, somewhere about.
I was just curious, because I haven't seen, you know, as far as like, you get out here and tell these people, okay, this is the cost of this, and, you know.
There's been lots of presentations on that.
That's been very vague on it, and very vague, there's no firm numbers there.
There isn't a timeline, there really isn't, and in the water rates.
They've got, I mean, they've got a timeline, I would love to see.
It's on the agenda, but I'm.
I mean, because I'm, I'm just trying to figure it out, you know, so I can tell the people out here who have bigger questions than I do, because I, I've been looking at this.
But you're talking about the wholesalers, you know, the people who are asking you questions.
No, I don't, no, no.
Part of the reason your water rates are so high is because those same people did not want the long-term agreement, they want what's good for them, not what helps everybody, so because.
Explain to me they wanted something that was good for the city of Minwells and the district, and.
That's what they're telling, that's not.
Well, I've seen the contracts, I mean, they don't look too good.
The open's did, how much ga- how much gallons are getting, over two hundred thousand gallons, yeah, whatever.
Well, I noticed y'all.
Now, Glenn's back taping, he's this juicy stuff he's zooming in.
Y'all went in and got that ACR that they were asking about so much, so.
He did. Made a whole half million gallon difference, every little bit helped.
That, that was one of their major complaints, and y'all went ahead and did it, so I'm saying.
Done everything I said I would do, including for you, I try to do what.
I'm not saying you haven't, it's, it's always been that way, I mean, I'm just talking.
I try to do everything I tell people.
Well, I'm trying to do everything I tell people that I would do, and they want some real numbers, that's all I'm saying.
They have been out there, though, I swear, even in the water rate structure.
And perhaps, I'm not perfect, everybody makes mistakes.
In the water rate structure, they're listed in scenario two.
Okay, I did see all that, I did see all that, listen.
They're right on the second page.
But, I get to see scenarios, but how do we know which one you're talking, I mean, that's what I want to see, what, y'all presented to Yaltalk Securities, whoever's doing this bond for you.
Olive. Olive. Olive.
But you don't know which scenario you're talking about.
No.
Not you.
Scenario, it's Turkey Peak Water Treatment Plant.
You told me all that in the last email that we gave.
It, that is.
But y'all just kind of lumped it out there as this big lump, I mean, well, I know we got all these problems at the Yaltalk Treatment Facility, you know, I saw the violations, I saw all that, I have no idea, I know it's old, it was from twenty twenty-one, well, it took us a year to, like, I had to, because you guys kept it for us.
I didn't.
Not you guys, you know, I mean, when I say you guys.
I told people when he left, if I'd have known about that violation.
I know, you, you came in there when your office was still over there in the place.
If I'd have known about that violation, I'd have handled these water contracts totally differently, that came up to me from a wholesaler, talking about violation, I'm like, what violation you talking about?
We have not been told, we haven't been told anything as far as what y'all's paying our tenants, I haven't seen anything.
To fix the water treatment.
I know you're gonna build a new one.
It is beyond its service.
I know you're gonna build a new one, I understand it, I, I know, it's older, it's older than new, Brandon.
And me too, well, there you go.
Oh, it, it, it's useful, life was like ten years ago, I mean, fifty years.
So, they should have been working on this probably in the nineties, coming into two thousand, it's end of life.
Oh, yeah.
Should have, would have, could have.
And our, all, all our infrastructures are basically the same boat as that, and most of it, all is, is all fifty years old.
Or longer, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, it's all separate on the base, and just like that darn thing that they open out there all the time, that valve, that's because it comes from a big old pipeline that used to flow water.
And that's because we can't get enough pressure out there, there's not enough demand, so they have to flow it, and, and Joe's point is good, but they're trying to keep enough coronation to create a draw, so it'll move.
Yeah, I, I talked to the gentleman that installed that valve the other day, so, he can explain to me that that's the way we do it.
It really is just to keep the coronation moving around, so they don't get sick or have bad water.
Yeah, it doesn't push out through that pipe, because there's no flow.
It won't move, it, it's just like one big loop, and it'll just sit there, because there's not even, the little bit of flushing is not enough to move, that, those are, think about, that was a thirty thousand person military base, that's a lot of water.
So, it doesn't have a circulation pump on it that.
You don't have a pump on it, no, those are all pressure demand, they're not pumped, it comes off the hills, and it's just pressure.
That's why they couldn't get a clean test, though, because it's not got, it doesn't have enough to move it out of there, get that stuff out of that pipe.
Because he, because he walked, but I'll get you the answer, or somebody will this afternoon?
Thank you, and, don't forget to send me some figures if you get a chance, I know you got other things going on.
I mean, I'll send you the last slideshow, and it'll be again on Tuesday, but.
I think that was, yeah, I saw it on the slideshow.
It showed sixty months, it showed sixty months, cost for each project.
Well, I would love to have a copy of the slideshow, that would help me a lot.
That's fine, uh, and.
I mean, I'm just asking you, because I mean.
No, 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 I mean, it was, I'll be in a fourth.
That'd be great, I just, I would like to.
And that's the whole two hundred and eighty-seven million, and then that's what I was saying, not to exceed, it even says that in the resolution, well, now the challenge is with the RO drought, okay, don't go over this.
How do you do a million, a million bucks a month on RO if you're gonna.